Fifth, order at five oh three. And I will turn it over to Dr. Spitz.
Let's start with Ms. Preston and the financial update.
The only thing I have is a purchase of interactive, the Promethium boards. You know, we did a small purchase of those, about a year and a half ago, I think. And we're going to roll the rest, all of them out, using the KIRZAC money. No attachments?
Yes.
Okay.
Asked someone earlier today.
Did you? Both of us. Okay, all right.
I thought you were asking questions.
So, yeah, we only have one vendor, and it's the one, the vendor that we've been using every time we bought these. And they've always come in at the lowest price. They must get really good pricing because none of the other vendors can beat them. It's pretty significant, almost 2.4 million.
The prices are in line with...
What we have been buying. What they've been getting, the deals they've been giving us.
Between last year and this year, this is pretty much...
Oh, this, they'll be everywhere now.
Okay. We should need them for a while. We shouldn't need them for a while.
I don't know, how long they last? Eight years?
He replaced the projectors eight years ago, so I think this should last 180.
Okay.
And that's not for KIRZAC.
That's KIRZAC. We can use it for loss of learning, so we use it. Then the only thing I have is if there's any questions on the mileage rate, you know, at six o'clock, we had to have our public hearing because one of the three has to be at six. So after this, whole session, we'll have a public hearing Tuesday. We had one at 12:00 today.
We'll have one next week.
Next week to adopt Thursday at 12:00.
So we have to have a call in there.
Any questions for Ms. Preston? Thank you. Dr. Whitehead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just to provide you an update on continuing to review information that we have, looking back at data again from last year. I know that after we gave the last report on July 26th, I think there were some that were looking to compare that date to a different date and time. So I just provided some point in time comparisons. And just a reminder that like data is reported at the end of the day at three o'clock in the afternoon. So when I reported on the 27th, I was giving you data from July 26th. In addition to that, looking at that, one of the things that we did and tried to discuss some during our last meeting was to make our leveling up and down decisions based on site-specific data or district data. Because if you look at community transmissions over the last year, and then what was happening in our schools, there wasn't a direct correlation all the time. And so last year, the highest community transmission rate during the school year, it was higher in the summer before school started, but during the school year was the week, it actually occurred on January 20th. And our week ending on 129, we had 0.29% of our students that had tested positive and just over 1% of staff members that were positive at that time. And so even though the percentages per population were on the very high end, we weren't necessarily seeing that as a direct correlation. Our highest numbers that we were seeing were in February. And even at that point, that was the highest number for students. We had the 0.48% of students during that particular week that had tested positive. But again, just trying to give context for why we were making the decisions about leveling up and leveling down site-specific rather than just looking at the community transmission rate, which is based on a two-week average per 100,000 people. And so that didn't necessarily play out in our data. And I know I've got some questions about why we were going with those numbers rather than looking at community transmission.
Questions for Dr. Whitehead?
No, I do have a comment, of course. If typically, the average of children passing or being tested is much lower because they have no signs and symptoms typically, and they still transmit it. So in other words, they're still delivering the bug to other people. We are at 72 at the hospital in patients. Our highest was 98. We are significantly higher than we have been. And I get looking at it this way, but community-wise, there's got to be some other data that would show the point of that we truly need to mask people up. I know it's very unpopular, and it's hard to make that decision, I get it. But I'm telling you from the front lines, the ECC is way overwhelmed already. The ICUs are overflowing. We had four ICU patients last night that we couldn't even put on the floor. There was two in Camden. And we have three ICUs instead of two, and they're full. So no matter what numbers say, what I can tell you for a fact is that we're overly inundated with COVID again. The numbers are not going down, the numbers are going up. I know, hey, let's make a decision tonight and make them mask up tomorrow would be very difficult, I get that. But it is, and it will continue to be the right thing to do. Having kids, being able to keep this bug going around, and teachers and people who are healthy, just isn't the way to go for our community. I appreciate all that you do, I really do, because I know how difficult it is. But the, anyway, we'll talk again, I guess, Tuesday night, when I try to bring some people up here that are part of the medical profession, where you don't have to just hear it from me again. But thank you for listening, and it is awful at the hospital right now. Right now, this minute, it's awful at the hospital. So take that into consideration when you're thinking about this. Or somebody else's opinion of putting on a mask, that was a research done in Germany that has nothing to do with what's going on today, right here, right now. That's all, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Whitehead? Ms. Miller and Ms. Haywood.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Y'all are doing well. We're asked to give an update on our virtual status for this upcoming school year, so we felt it was important to make sure we kept the board aware. And so we opened up the application for virtual school back in April, and we've just been, not April, I'm sorry, back in June, and we've been monitoring the applications. We have received a total of 311 applications for grades six through 12. However, we only have 135 students who will actually be participating virtually as of the first day of school. We had a number of parents who called that submitted applications that have since rescinded those applications as they felt it would be best for their children to participate in instruction face-to-face. So as of today, we have 135 students that will be participating in grade six through 12 for virtual school first day.
So I just wanted to give an update on elementary and the virtual school option. Currently, we are not going to implement a virtual school option for elementary schools. We've checked with surrounding counties, and none of our surrounding counties are offering Camden, Camden, Wayne, Brantley, Norah, McIntosh, nobody is offering virtual. We found that that just was not the best way to meet the needs of our younger learners. With young children especially, you're trying not only to meet the academic needs, but also the social and the emotional needs of those young learners, and that's basically impossible to do through a computer, especially to teach writing to younger children or reading, math. It's just very, very difficult. So with that, you know, we've been working with the CDC as well as the Department of Public Health, and we have found that they even are highly promoting all students return to school face-to-face, face-learning. So we are sticking with their recommendations. In fact, the CDC website even says students benefit from in-person learning and make it a priority to get them back into school face-to-face in the fall of 2021. So that's what we hope to do at the elementary level with our levels of protection in place as far as hand washing, social distancing at all times when possible. Face masks are certainly recommended to students, so we hope to have all of our elementary-age kids back face-to-face this year.
Questions concerning virtual learning options that we're offering here in Glen County?
Can you, homeschool kids, can you throw me some of the research that, not, you know, whatever you can? How many kids are successful in homeschooling? And what the effects of that is when everybody says, hey, you need to go to school, we shouldn't do virtual? But yet lots of kids are homeschooled and are very successful. It doesn't...
We can certainly provide, you know, some information about that, I'd be glad to gather that for you. But you also have to remember homeschooling, also many times you have somebody there facilitating that homeschool for that child. And the way we implemented virtual last year in elementary was a face-to-face teacher all day long. They had basically six hours, five hours of instruction with a face-to-face teacher. This year, we are having a hard time even filling face-to-face classrooms with certified staff. You know, finding teachers to do above and beyond and do the virtual as well is very difficult. So that plays into part of the decision, but the number one decision is because it's just what's best for kids to be face-to-face with a teacher. Because many students, we found last year, did not have that facilitator at home like they do many times in a homeschool setting. But I'd be glad to provide you some feedback with that.
Would you like that information, Mr. Madala, for K-12 in terms of homeschool, or are you primarily concerned about PK-5?
K-12.
Okay.
Is there a demand, a big demand for virtual?
Here at the board office, I have heard from less than 20 parents asking for virtual for elementary. I'm sure our principals have talked with parents as well. But most parents that we've talked to, once we, you know, let them know that we have the layers of protection in place, you know, at that time, they have either decided to homeschool or either, well, you know, I feel safe with my children going back face-to-face, so we're going to be able to try.
That's almost the number of emails I've gotten requesting virtual school for their kids in elementary school. That's right at that number.
About 20. That's about how many calls that we've had here.
So the resource, you put a teacher in front of a computer all day long for 20 students?
It could be, it could be five, fourth graders, three.
Yeah, so and the thing is, it could be all different levels, so you're not teaching the same thing, so now you have to have five teachers.
Exactly, that is exactly right.
And the stretch is very thin when it comes to personnel side.
And in the high school and middle school, we had that option. Is it county-wide, where like if you're in virtual for the middle school and high school, if you're a different school, is your homeschool base like Riesley or Jane Makin? I guess you just log in and there's one teacher for the whole district, or is it each individual?
In the middle schools and high schools, they use the program Edgenuity, which is more of a self-paced.
It's more of a self-paced option. It's more of a self-paced option. And so the interaction with the teacher would occur during the regular school hours of eight to four, whether it be through email or through messaging, what have you. And those teachers would be responsible for monitoring the students' overall progress, grading assignments, and those things through the Edgenuity platform.
But we're just not having an in-house like we did last year?
Exactly.
That is correct.
So even, you know, even if our numbers do warrant us starting to implement more mitigation preventative measures as well as maybe even shutting schools down, if we move to that and our numbers show that there's a need for definite virtual learning at the elementary level, it will look very different than it did last year. It has to. We don't have the personnel to teach it like we did last year. It will be some type of programs very similar to the Edgenuity in the middle and high schools where there's not an actual live teacher in front of the students every day. It's more of a work at your own pace, and then the teacher facilitates the grading and the work assignments in that type of thing.
Even with the state back, I mean, the problem with resources, getting teachers.
The problem with finding teachers.
Finding teachers.
We had that problem last year, or the year before that.
We're having that problem more and more each year, and it's just like a snowball rolling down here. We've been told this for 10 years that it's coming. People just are not going to college to get education in this.
Sure, it's not just us.
And let me say this also, that the, our teachers are still using their Google Classroom to plan. They still have videos that they made last year, and they can improve on those this year. So if it is quarantine at home, or if tested positive and needs to stay home, they can keep up with their class just like they did last year. So we can do that. We still have the ability to do that. Any other questions concerning virtual learning? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Blackerby.
Have some visitors that will be joining us, but I will go ahead and work down through the agenda the way it's posted there. First being the Red Academy Physical Education Auxiliary Gym Edition. Update on that is we're still progressing, trying to have the HVAC system operational. We did get confirmation from Tyson Construction this week, I believe it was yesterday. We are going to be without air conditioning in the actual gym itself for about two and a half, three more weeks. It's going to be probably August 31st when that air conditioning is going to be turned on in the, in the actual gym itself. Of course, days like today even set it back even further with the rain, but they were doing, doing work inside the best they could today. But as of right now, we'll start the school year without the air conditioning on in the gym. I wasn't there today. Today was a cooler day, so it wasn't unbearable in there, but you know, we will have to limit the activities in there for the first couple of weeks anyway. Then Altama Elementary School replacement. We did have our walk-through with the fire inspector yesterday through the remaining part of the building, the admin portion and the media center. And we did receive our certificate of occupancy yesterday, so we can't occupy the building officially for the, for the first day of school. Teachers are in the building, in their classrooms, they are setting up their classrooms, getting things ready to go. Kitchen is, staff is, will be reporting next week to get everything operational in the kitchen. And Ms. Drew has the staff in here, they've already had, had their big staff meeting in the cafeteria. So the work that remains to be done to get things ready for the first day of school is centered around the front office area, and that's, that's where all the work is concentrated. We hope to have most of that wrapped up by tomorrow, although we do already have the certificate of occupancy on it so that we can make sure we get the furniture in there that they need to operate school for the, for the first, first day of school and for open house. Of course, as you drive by there, you'll notice the fascia metal on the outside that is essentially on hold right now. Mr. Tooten and I met with the installers of that, and we put that work on hold due to some quality, so I'll determine some quality control issues on the way the material was going up. And so we've, we've halted that work until we can get those issues resolved. And in addition to that, of course, landscape and, and some of the site work is still, still ongoing as school starts. But we will, will be continuing to work on the gym area and throughout the building, tying up loose ends and things for the next couple of months at least probably. But, but school will be operational as it is. Moving to the East Plus Four projects, and that's where I have some gentlemen here with, with me. We have Joe Kinsey, he's with McKnight Construction. He'll be the project manager on that, on that project. And then we have Eddie Potts with Lavender Construction, who will be handling the renovations at Golden Isles, Needwood, and Oglethorpe Point. So the first thing we're going to discuss or present is the guaranteed maximum price for Phase Two of St. Simon's Elementary, which includes the concrete and steel works. And this was bid out through Georgia Perimeter Registry as well as, you know, contacting subcontractors. And the recommended Phase Two price for the, the concrete and steel is, as you see it there, the 2.1 million. Any additional information on that? Mr. Kinsey could entertain questions on kind of how, how we derived those numbers or, or any, any other questions you may have.
Had good coverage from subcontractors on each of those bid packages.
When is work supposed to begin on Phase Two?
Well, the, you can figure it out. The initial thing will be shop drawings and awarding the contracts, of course, but go ahead, Joe.
The work's on getting Phase Two, as you can see, it's steel and concrete. We did early bid packages on AC, the shop drawings and cement process, so those are the longer lead items. The rest of the drawings will be done, and actually, we did out now, on the electrical, mechanical, all those trades will be ready for the September board meeting. So once those are approved and contracts are issued, we project October 1st, the building start making. And visible allowance and those materials to help accelerate that initial start construction.
Yeah, so essentially what this does, this allows, basically, you know, steel shortages and those types of things, that allows us to get at the front of the line for, for those materials that come in. As this is, as we're doing this, though, Phase One is already started, and the site work is underway. Playground has been relocated to the front of the school, you can go by, see that. We've started the site clearing, site prep for this portion of it. I believe the water sewer connections, they were boring underneath.
They're doing the work in the right of way now.
Yes.
Both at Ocean and at Demery, and I hope that the terrible weather this week has not set that back so far. But the schedule was to complete that work tomorrow.
Hang on. Is something we need to do on Tuesday?
Yes.
Golden Isles, I'm talking about Golden Isles, Needwood.
Yeah. So Golden Isles, Needwood, and Oglethorpe, the renovations that we're working, all those are, are being handled with construction management through Lavender Construction, which Mr. Eddie Potts is here to represent them as a project manager. And this, or scroll back. And this, or scroll back now, sorry. This is Golden Isles. So the first page you're seeing here is the, is the guaranteed maximum price for Golden Isles Elementary with the, the total cost. And again, this says for Phase One because this project also will be broken up into two phases because next summer we, we should be doing the kitchen and what remain, remaining work on the gym that's not included in, in this part of the.
And, and the site work.
And some site work, which will include some work around the back parking lot to increase the, the teacher parking as well as access to the trash dumpsters and a few other, and some drainage issues in the back of the building. But the recommended GMP for that is four million, eleven, eight hundred.
And one thing about Golden Isles is I want to say that our maintenance department did a great job. Our custodians did a great job to get this stuff moved from Golden Isles to the old Altama. And our, our custodians cleaned that building. I mean, it looked, it looked pretty good before people moved in there. And I went by there today, the, the teachers are all moved into their room. They're having a faculty meeting in the cafeteria there and everyone seems happy. And I know they would rather be at their school, but they're very happy to have that so we can fix their school up.
How long are they planning on being at the old Altama?
Christmas, hopefully after Christmas. When we leave Christmas break, our plan is, I hope that's still our plan, to move those folks back to Golden Isles.
That's our plan, the, one of the, hold up, you know, we, just like with the steel package of that, mechanical equipment, that's the HVAC equipment and, and other thing, and the availability of flooring. And as of late, paint has also been kind of hard to come by in some, some of our projects. So the sooner we get the contract signed and go, and Eddie could speak to that, but the sooner we can get that moving, quicker we can get in the manufacturing process, particularly for the HVAC equipment.
And I would say that in today's market, it's an aggressive schedule, but we will press to meet.
We got it in Altama. We're gonna get it next year.
So that's Golden Isles. I'm not sure, and Needwood next? Yeah, Needwood Middle is next. And of course, we've already, this is Phase Two of Needwood. Phase One is the roof, which is currently underway. It's nearing completion. Of course, Eddie is, is handling that one as well. This is Phase Two, and this includes much of the similar scope of work as at Golden Isles. It's HVAC work, some electrical work, painting, floor coverings, the new marker boards and, and ceilings throughout the building. And the, as you see, it's kind of broken at the bottom there. The base bid is four point five million, but we are recommending an HVAC alternate and, which is an increase of five hundred and nineteen thousand. That alternate, what that includes is we, the current configuration, the HVAC system there is, is wall mount units, barred units. They're not near as efficient as going to the, the split systems that we're, that we're recommending going to. And also the equipment that we're getting is much more readily available in, in this market. And, and it will be a tremendous savings on energy going forward. And this is one building where we do have a mezzanine area and we, we have a building that's designed so that it will allow us to convert to this a little more easily than some. So we are recommending that we do move with that, that alternate to, to upgrade the HVAC system. So in the end, the total GMP is five point three million is the recommended GMP. And that does include a three hundred thousand dollar contingency, which, you know, if, if we don't spend or don't need for something, that is returned to us. Questions on Needwood?
Will this work be, be done during?
Okay, so this work, good, but this work is being, going to be done phases. We're gonna, in working with the principal, we, we can have access to one wing at a time. So we're gonna go through and do a wing at a time. We predict, and Eddie, correct me if I say something wrong, we predict that it's gonna take about six weeks probably to do the first wing. And if we get all of our equipment and everything staged correctly, we may be able to do the next two wings a little bit quicker than that. So we hope to, to roll through the wings, you know, in roughly four to six weeks apiece.
Will students be in those wings?
No. The principal has identified a way to, it, it's, it's gonna be quite a task for her, but she does have a way to maneuver the kids around the building so that we can vacate a wing at a time in order to accomplish this.
Occupation of Golden Isles is much more dense than it is at Needwood. We just could not move them around Golden Isles, we had to move them.
The key to that six weeks though is that you can get all this in place on site so that every air conditioner is there, every light fixture is there. Because if you have to wait on those materials after they start, it won't work. So that's the, that's the key is when can all of those materials be stored on site and ready to go for the first wing?
So we haven't ordered any equipment or materials as of yet?
Not until the GMP is.
It's, it's all, it's all in this public bid that we, we conducted. So that's the way the equipment would be acquired.
So if this is approved, your expectation is that Mr. Potts will, will start that process immediately?
Yes. And we anticipate maybe in October, November start date. That gives plenty of time to get everything approved, all the material, equipment here. So we move in that first wing, we can do the whole thing, just attack it, and then move to the next, and the next. And then a lot of the work will be done next summer. A lot of the scrum footage will be done next summer.
Yeah, 'cause we're gonna put, next summer, we will do the office areas, the cafeteria, kitchen work, those areas. And this, the, the first part of the job, we'll focus on those classrooms.
So we have a completion date prior to fall of twenty-two?
Yes, that will be the intent.
That's, that is the intent. And let me be clear though.
For both Golden Isles and Needwood, the completion date will be June twenty-two?
Golden Isles, we're hoping to be able to occupy.
Mid-year.
But, but there will be work that goes on into twenty-twenty-two because we'll have to come back and do the kitchen in, in another phase. Because we're not, we, we, there's no way to accomplish getting the kitchen done during the school year this year.
And just to be clear, on each of the three, Oglethorpe, Needwood, and Golden Isles, the kitchen portion has yet to be bid, so we'll be coming with another additional cost once the kitchen equipment is set. But it will not be near the magnitude of these costs. So this is by far the bulk of the work.
And I think there's one more. Which is Oglethorpe Point, and same thing, this is Phase One. And just as Mr. Tooten just said, Phase Two would include the, the kitchen work there. Essentially the same scope of work that's going on at Golden Isles and, and Needwood with the painting, HVAC, floor coverings there. This, just like with Golden Isles, there's no major change out of equipment as far as the HVAC goes. It's, it's a one-for-one replacement. We are replacing ductwork in, in Golden Isles, which is the difference in the cost there. This, in Oglethorpe, we're not replacing near as much ductwork, I don't believe. So the, the recommended GMP for that is the four point four million that you see there in the grand total. And scheduling for Oglethorpe is considerably more challenging because while they have a little more room than Golden Isles to maneuver students around, they don't at this point, we'll see how things go after the students get in the building next week, but at this point, they don't have the ability to move students to, to free up an entire wing at a time. So right now, Mr. Potts has worked out potentially a schedule where we're doing a half a wing at a time. So we've broken up into six, six different phases within the project, which essentially, you know, would, would take all year and, and into next summer to complete. But they don't have the ability to move students around. And we also, getting four doors onto that property was not, not feasible either. So some, some of this work will have to take place on nights and weekends as well, which will also be a challenge for the subcontractors.
Any questions concerning the renovations?
All these within the budgets that we proposed that?
These are, these are over the budgets that were originally, I guess, proposed in, in the East Plus. Some of that has to do with the scope of work changed over time. A lot of it has to do with just the cost of things going up over the last two years has considerably raised the prices on, on materials. Materials ain't labor. While we did bid these projects out and, and in some cases begged people to, to bid on them, Oglethorpe's a prime example. It's very difficult to get people to commit to work on the door within the St. Simon's Island. So, you know, that, that also plays a factor in the pricing as well. Mr. Salmons, who's here, also with the Google report, we've discussed those pricing and we, we believe we have it worked out in, in East Plus to.
Yes.
Yes. So he can provide.
You're in good shape, buddy.
He can provide information. We've, we've had that discussion.
We've had a good East Plus.
We're talking about that in a second.
So any other questions on the projects? Salmons?
Me?
Yep.
You've got your report in, I'm putting on the screen here, the first multi-color sheet. It's really just a summary, Mike has talked about several of those projects and we've got some comments on those. I did actually change that one on the Performing Arts and, you know, we're showing a schedule on that, but all that's still pretty tentative as to when. We're showing, you know, the first payment on that next March or something like that in the cash flow. So that, that may or may not happen, but that's, that's where it is at this point. If you look at Page Two, that's kind of a summary of the Splos Three active and completed projects. And you'll see over on the far right toward the bottom that there's nineteen million, five hundred thousand dollars still to be paid. In these projects, this does not include the Performing Arts Center, twenty million dollars, as well as another million dollars on the building up here at One Academy. That will start work on in the twenty-three. If you look at the third page, you will see that's the summary of the Splos Four of where we are right now. A lot of TV determines because the scope for a lot of these have not been determined. They are in the process of doing it, it's just like the recommendations. They're making them out, a lot of those scope items have, have changed and moved since, since you first started talking about this February of twenty. But you've got an overall view of where everything is at this point with the projects that are being discussed tonight. And also that one plus the Tillamash, our state capital outlet project, you did apply. Those have been approved for state capital outlet funding, over a million dollars apiece. And of course, you'll see the schedule there for St. Simon's. If you look over at Page Four of the report, you will see some of what I'm beginning to use to think would be strange news, but it looks like it's the norm. Your monthly report for this, your receipts against a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget is two million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand on your Splos receipt for this month. That again is a record without an adjustment month that we'd have. And if you look at your chart, which is the next page, you will see what that one has done. We have moved up every month. Evidently, I haven't been to any of your beaches or tried to eat out anywhere at night. You know, evidently, you've got a lot of folks around here. So that's good. And the last page is a comparison, comparison of red lines, what you've received to date. The dotted blue line is what you have received as of this time last year for the same months last year. And then of course, the, the dotted black line there at the bottom is the budget. Mike and I met on a cash flow meeting in the laundry yesterday and we're probably going to, we think we might be safe to adjust that budget up a little bit. You know, if we're a million dollars over budget, we may be able to move it up just a little bit. We'll be moving that million seven for the next several months. Some of you have been here and heard my old man tales long enough, you know, these, these good periods last ten to fifteen years. We're in twelve years with this one since, you know, oh-eight, oh-nine, oh-ten downturn. So I'm, I find to think before you get through with this and as we get closer to the end, it's probably good to bank some money now, cause two or three years from now, we may see some downturn on some of this and we may see progress in that. A little closer to fall, when we'd like to see. But, but anyway, that's, that's what you got, good news on the receipts. And the items that, that they talked about and the budgets and so forth, there is money in this program, a couple of those. And we have been continually monitoring that for a long time and will continue to do so and make these adjustments on the cash flow of the items if you look soon enough. So bottom line, you're in very good shape on the new program and the other ones are continuing well. And we still have, you know, funds left in, East Plus Three plus some things to do that right now from some of the staff have looked at. So, yeah, thank you, we're in good shape at this point.
Hopefully these contractors will buy the building supplies locally.
What's that?
Thank you.
Hopefully, yes.
It's in our local community, we shop local.
That will be able to pay for it.
And when I'm standing here at the end of this program in eight years, no, I won't be doing that, never mind.
I'll be here listening to you.
Any other questions for these guys?
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's see. We have Ms. Seals and Ms. Tate with our annual report.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Um, probably around last year, I talked to Ms. Tate, our public relations specialist, about showcasing our school system in regards to what we had done as a district last school year. And so Ms. Tate began work, so I let Ms. Tate talk about that a little bit.
So what you see here, this is our twenty-twenty-one annual report. It is a snapshot of our past year as Ms. Seals stated. But it is also a marker for me, in my opinion, of the, the proud work that we're gonna be doing in the future. So if you go ahead and flip to the next page. So it, on each page, you will notice that we have information about our board, of course, our superintendent's corner, but each page after is dedicated to our schools. So they all have a point of pride page. They also have academic achievements that they should be very proud of. And this was not something that I took on by myself. This is a lot of hard work from our schools and from our district, and especially from our departments here at the office. It was a lot of work together and I'm very proud of it. And I'll give y'all the moment to look it over, but if, whenever you get a chance, just, you know, take that time to point it. You can see how much joy and proudness our schools have taken into each one of these pages.
Guys, y'all can just keep it rolling.
This is on our website, right?
Yes.
We wanted to make sure the Board of Education had an opportunity to see it. We're highlighting schools, schools that receive the L four G A grant, Twenty First Century Grant, various points of pride from athletics, academic events, various things for every, every school program in our district. And we just thought this was a great way to show our community, number one, what we've done as a school system beyond test scores, but also in pictures. And a great way to celebrate a year that we all were able to push through as a district. And so just a way to say thank you to our community as well too, for their support of our school system and our students this past year. So this is something that we hope to be able to put together every school year to show our community what we've done during the last school year as we prepare for the next school year. As they keep going through, you'll note too, I love the page that talks about our class of twenty-twenty-one and all the schools where they received acceptance. And of course, the graduation pictures are always a, that's always a point of pride for our district. And as they continue through, our stronger blend is there. And what we did with our leaders over the summer, going, department highlights are there as well as retirement of those employees and the luncheon we had. And, you know, as Dr. Spence was talking about, the different things in our community that we went into, but also thanking our community for the East Plus and how we're using that in our schools as well.
And of course, a, a nice shout-out, if, you know, you're not following us on social media, make sure to do so on these platforms and use that stronger blend for when we start back. platforms and use that stronger blend for when we start back school on August the tenth. Any questions? If any questions.
So is that in the pamphlet or do you have it in a?
That's the digital copy, but I'm hoping to print some off for you guys.
Can you send me a copy?
Absolutely.
We're looking to have some printed so we can share with our chamber as well, too.
You're good to give it out for sure.
Thank you for your support.
Very good job.
So under other, I put that we were going to have our second of three military hearings at six P M. today. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
C one, C East Plots, the, all the different attachments.
Yeah.
They weren't on mine.
They're not on mine either.
If there's any way to get those. Okay, we'll get them and upload them to everybody. Kind of with Mike and our patrol team, the Sam's out and they want to review that for Tuesday. Any other, other from anyone else? Executive session, personnel, land, no land, no legal, just personnel. So I'd attend motion to go to executive session for personnel.
We, we have legal.
We do have legal? Legal and personnel.
So.
I'll vote in favor. Motion passes. Five.
So move. Mr. Mansell, second number, Givens, others in favor. unanimous at six oh nine. I don't attend a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right. About here again.
Second.
Who wants, let's get it.
I'm in.
All right, others in favor. Meeting is adjourned at six oh nine.